Yeah.
Is it okay if I read off?
Of course, yeah, just start with your name and where you live, please.
Um, hi, I'm Noelle Lee, I'm sixteen years old and I live at the Aspen Mobile Home Park. Um, so I'm here today to not just speak on behalf of myself and my family, but also of the other people who live here at the Mobile Home Park. Um, this place has been everything, it's where we're like, we, where our lives unfolded, um. Sorry, I'm really nervous, um.
How you doing, girl?
Where we've laughed, struggled, healed and grown. Um, my family has lived in this mobile home park for as long as I can remember. In fact, uh, my mom has been here for twenty-seven years, more than half of her life. Um, she came here during one of the most difficult times in her life, seeking stability, hope and a new beginning, and this community gave her that. Um, it gave us that. This home isn't just walls and a roof, it's our safe place. It's where we gathered for birthdays, where we stayed up late doing homework, where we self, felt safe when the world outside felt uncertain. Um, every corner of this place holds memories. The sound of kids playing after school, neighbors checking in on each other, the shared meals, the everyday kindness that built a community. That's what's being taken, taken from us. It's not just about finding another place to live. It's about being torn away from, um, from the school we've gone to since we were little, from the friends who feel like family, from the streets and parks and porches that shaped who we are. We're not just being asked to move, we're being asked to give up the life we built from the ground up. And the worst part is, you don't know where we'll end up. Some families might end up across town, some even further. Um, that sense of safety and belonging we've held on for so long is disappearing. I'm sorry, we're not just, um, tenants, we're neighbors, we're ca- caregivers, workers, volunteers. We're a community that looks up, out for one another. This mobile home park isn't just a place we live, it's a part of who we, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, anybody else online that came in late? No? Okay.
Sorry, I'm walking slower. Good afternoon, my name is Annalee and I'm from the Aspen Basalt Mobile Home Park. I just wanted to relay on what my neighbors have said. Um, it's more about the community and what has shaped us into who we are. Um, we do appreciate all the counties that have stepped up and stepped up and helped us. Um, I just wanna say that we are more than statistics and we are people that contribute to the entire valley, not just Basal or Aspen, but Carbondo and Glenwood as well. And I think it is now to make the difference to put into situations that seem too far along and maybe impossible because they will take a lot of work. But I believe that if we do come together and we have the support of the counties, um, our communities can continue to have multi-generational, um, people living in them to continue to be part of this, so, um, of this valley that's made up of people from all walks of life. So I just wanna say thank you for hearing us out and, um, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments tonight? Yep.
What do you mean? My name is Veronica Vargas and I'm the first generation of, the third generation of my family. And I just wanna say thank you for having us in here. I have lived in there for thirty-two years and hoping to keep living in there until my retirement. Thank you for helping us and thank you for listening for us.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board? Okay. Okay, um, we're gonna move on with the rest of our agenda then and the item to discuss our potential contribution is near the end of our agenda. So you're welcome to stay if you want to, if you need to go, we understand and we've taken your comments and appreciate your time very much. Um, but it'll probably be around seven-thirty to eight, somewhere in there when we get to that item. Okay, moving on to the other action items then. First action item tonight is the, um, Mountain Fair liquor license application and I think Michael's here, hi Michael. To tell us a little bit about that. We originally had this on consent agenda and, um, I just talked back and forth with the clerk and manager that these really big liquor licenses like this, I think it's a good opportunity for the community here and update what's new with Mountain Fair this year, what's the same, um, for us to hear about the security plan um, and the, you know, planning around serving alcohol and making sure that that's done safely and legally and all that. And, um, any other updates you wanna share?
Yeah, um, thanks for letting us speak to this, uh, and, and thanks to the town support. You guys, this is a huge community event and it couldn't happen without the support of the town and the community. Um, and so we're really appreciative, particularly, uh, Patrick just jumping in and I think really helping kind of shepherd this through as well as, um, Eric and Chief Wilson's time to figure out the security and this new kind of evolving addition of how we're approaching Main Street. You know, at the core, part of the partnership is really making sure that it is a safe environment, it's an inclusive environment. And the biggest piece that we're most excited about is really, um, Mountain Fair kind of growing onto Main Street. We did it last year, we learned a lot. This year, I think we're making a lot of improvements to figure out how to make that even better. We've listened to the community and really responded to that. Um, I think a big piece of that is just the, um, thing that we wanna be focused on a little bit tonight is that Beer Garden area, there, this is one of many ways that we're looking at keeping space. It did well last year to attract people there, they moved through that space and there were a lot of, um, vendors there for kids. This year, we're looking at it as being more than just for kids and family and looking at it more as a block party for the entire community. Um, that Beer Garden will be, um, supplied by Mountain Heart, so we're supporting it, a local business there. We're gonna have an additional music tent, so there'll be live music in that space through the entire fair. And in addition to what we have had in the past, which is an activity tent, which hosts performances, um, we're partnering with Dancing Initiative to do more movement-based performances. So there's, um, dances, line dances, a lot of fun things that are more interactive. Uh, so that space is really intended to not just be another place to drink beer, but another, it's another place for community to gather, uh, and connect. We're instituting some of the same kind of placemaking infrastructure and investments that we've brought to First Friday, the bistro tables and chairs, the blue blocks. Uh, these are things that we're continuing to look at and figure out how to make that space sticky, right? If we put a couple more food trucks there with some more tables and give a piece, people a reason to, um, not just pass through, but stay there for a little while. A, a big reason why we're doing this is to, to spread out the crowds. Uh, it was, felt like the park was getting crowded and so this is an effort for us to kind of diffuse that a little bit and, and provide more entertainment, more things to happen in a, in a bigger space. Um, I think as part of that, we've communicated with Main Street businesses. Some of them, uh, I think will join us on the street. We have, uh, La Raza last year offered some food, think they will do that again this year. Um, we've talked to Mountain Tide, they're excited to be part of the community and, and spill out into ma- into the street in some way as well. So we're really in the works of figuring out what all of that looks like in detail, but it's exciting to be able to bring, um, the fair to those businesses as well, to help support them. We're working with, um, some of the local businesses to figure some signage out to tell people, hey, it's, it's a two-minute walk to, to Fat Belly or a one-minute walk to, to White House so they know that the fair doesn't end at those boundaries, that we wanna encourage people to continue to kind of meander through the district. The other things that I think are just worth noting in the park, we, you know, we've, the, the permit says that we are allowed to, to go to ninety decibels. We've worked in the past with the neighbors and, and communications, we're gonna try to lower that a little bit this year just 'cause we know the sound systems had a little bit more impact than we anticipated last year. So, um, again, just trying to be responsive to make this a community event that works for everyone as much as possible. I think there's a lot of information in your packets. Uh, I don't need to go over all of it in detail, but if there are questions on anything uh, specific to security plan or any of that, I can try to answer that now.
Maybe just touching on the security plan and, you know, I think we're in year three now, maybe, where we've required private security for larger events that have a liquor license. Um, and, uh, you know, Mountain Fair has this long history of using volunteers and Peace Patrol and managing that really well and having a lot of our uniformed officers as support. Um, but just any updates on the security plan and, and just kind of feedback on how that's going, where we do require a certain amount of private security.
For sure, yeah, I mean, I think for that requirement for us, it was a huge, um, cost implication and so again, just the partnership with the town and being able to figure out how that Peace Patrol and the volunteers can continue to provide supplemental support, whereas the hired security is really focused on, um, the key things where they're needed. Um, the, one of the primary aspects of that is just the entrance and exit and enforcing the liquor perimeters, right? And so, um, making sure that people aren't bringing things in that they're not supposed to, but, uh, more importantly, not making sure that they're not leaving that space. And then the, the volunteers really just help be additional eyes and ears throughout the park and then, um, town police being there for kind of the top of the chain of the incident command. We did a great job last year of having a, an enormous amount of volunteers go through crowd management training. And so now we have instituted that as a, as a precedent. We continue to, to make sure that we have a good ratio of staff, volunteers who are familiar with that. And we have a safety meeting prior to the fair where that kind of incident management plan is reviewed um, with all of the partners, fire, police, security and volunteers.
Great. Okay, with that, just open it up to any questions from the board on this liquor license? Okay. Okay. Well, uh, then we could entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the liquor license for Mountain Fair twenty-twenty-five. Is there a number or something I have to say?
I think that's okay. That work, so motion by Chris, second by Jess. Any questions before we vote? All of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, motion passes.
Great.
Thanks, Mike.
Hope to see you at the fair.
You will.
You will.
Indeed, yeah. Um, next item on the agenda is approval to, uh, install or appoint, um, Kevin Shoresman as interim town manager. Um, any staff comments on this item or how we should process this technically or anything from Mark?
No, it's my understanding that, well, first of all, fortunately for us and unfortunately for Kevin, he has plenty of experience in this area. But it's my understanding that no written document is necessary, um, to do this, but just to have it on the record that he has been appointed as the interim. He's clearly up to the job. Um, and he'll be back tomorrow and he and I will talk about, you know, what's left to do as well as the new, um, Um and he'll be back tomorrow and he and I will talk about, you know, what's left to do as well as the new um about to be hired town manager will also be here tomorrow to do some um interacting and and have at least a half a day of of overlap. So um I think it's just a matter of um making it official so that uh nobody questions whether or not, you know, Kevin has the authority to act as town manager.
Okay, and your last day is this Friday, the twenty sixth. So we I think that the we should have a motion. We can talk about it, but a motion should say, I would think, from um June twenty eighth until our new manager starts on August fourth. Mark, any other legalese here, technicalities? I mean, I think that's been Kevin's open to it, right, of an extra thousand dollars a month?
He's open to it. I think he would prefer to have it um sort of attached to the extra expenses that he's going to be incurring because when he does attend night meetings here, he does spend the night in town since he lives so far away. So he and I talked about it and I think that's perfectly appropriate.
Okay, so the motion should include that?
Sure.
Okay.
Either reimbursement of those expenses or a set amount.
Yeah, it seems like we're just gonna go with a set amount of a thousand dollars a month. It's a one-month deal. It's pretty straightforward. Um but I think Kevin wasn't gonna ask for that and was actually kind of refusing to take any extra stipend, but I think it's important that we at least help cover his costs and the extra hours of the extra meetings.
As far as papering, it will be, you know, Patrick will take minutes. This will be there. We'll record the vote.
Okay. Any questions or discussions on that one?
I'd move to approve uh Public Works Director Kevin Shoresman as the interim town manager for July first to August third. Is that correct? Or is it June twenty sixth?
I'd say June twenty eighth.
June from June twenty eighth through August third um with a thousand dollar stipend for expenses. Per month.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Chris, second by Jess. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, lots of manager business today, saying goodbye to Lauren and that's appointing Kevin and then approving a contract for Ryan at the end of the meeting. All right, uh next agenda item, thank you Jared for being here and I saw Chester come in as well. Um is the five-two-two Highway one thirty-three restaurant, first amendment to the Development Improvement Agreement. Hand it over to Jared.
Yeah, so I think um the amendment presented um to you all uh covers the direction that we received on the May thirteenth meeting. Um includes the one-time fee and loop payment, which is fifty percent of the original project estimate, no time limitation and is restricted to the use um to the undergroundings project area. And we included the map as an exhibit to kind of help tie everything up. So I'm happy to answer any questions, um but would recommend that you guys approve the first amendment to the Development Improvement Agreement.
Okay, questions?
We already discussed this.
Yeah, we discussed it, link.
I move to approve the first amendment to the Development Improvements Agreement for five-twenty-two Highway one thirty-three restaurant project.
Second.
Motion by Jess, second by Erica. Any questions before we vote? Applicants good with this? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Chester. Thanks, Jared. Okay, uh next item on the action items is the Town Center update from Art Space. And I see that Andrew is here with us remotely and thanks for the memo. Lauren, did you wanna say anything by way of introduction?
No, I think I think uh Andrew's pretty much got it covered.
Great.
Thank you.
Uh welcome back. Be here and we look forward to your update.
Uh thank you. Uh first of all, can everyone hear me all right? I know there was some audio issues earlier in the meeting. We're good. Great, thank you. Well, uh first off, uh thank you for the opportunity to appear in front of the board once again. I did provide a memo in advance of the meeting, which I think covers the the bulk of the topics that I wanted to touch on. Uh when last year in front of the board uh in March, among the things that we we um took away were to advance some of the funding opportunities primarily for the Southwest Promenade and also further investigate what some other funding opportunities may be for the the site more broadly, but in particular, the Sixth Street component of the site. So what we'll be do tonight is to touch on all of that and of course um take questions, comments from the board. And I'm hoping we can find some direction on on some next steps forward, um particularly on Sixth Street, but um uh potentially other components of the site as well. Uh one thing that I unfortunately do wanna start off with tonight is I noted in the memo, uh we had applied for the Community Revitalization Tax Credit, which is a new program through O-Edit. Uh I was expecting that those award announcements would come on Thursday of this week. Unfortunately, I did receive an email just a couple of hours ago uh indicating that the Southwest Promenade was not selected uh in this round of funding, unfortunately. Um I don't yet have any further details from um O-Edit on what their decision-making was. Uh but I will have the opportunity to to debrief for them and hopefully understand where we could be stronger on subsequent application. Uh I do know, however, that for about ten million dollars of availability, there was more than forty-one million dollars in requests. So I'm certain there were a lot of projects uh unfortunately similar to ours that were not funded. But I did wanna make sure I shared that information with you um as part of this meeting, um as we received that earlier today. So um unfortunately, that was a significant source. We are uh seeking for uh the Southwest Promenade. But I think uh there is a silver lining is that it is an ongoing program and we will have opportunities in future rounds uh to apply for that as well. Uh again, and in addition to other sources that we've also outlined, so unfortunate news there. Um but um I think in the context of of our presentation this evening and what I I wanna talk about, I think that actually dovetails in with um how I'm I'm wanting to get some um some strength in our applications and some direction in taking that forward. And I think um pivoting, you know, really to the the conversation around how can we address the the identified goals of the town of Carbondale, particularly around affordability and advance a project? The middle-income housing tax credit um is as outlined in the memo. It's a new program through CHAFA and a limited scope of availability this first year, but will be expanded um in future years to have more funding availability, assuming that a similar round um would be timed as the one this year. That would be around April or May um if we were to apply and take that forward. And that would be a source of funds that is targeted for eighty percent AMI up to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. It looks, acts and feels a lot like a low-income housing tax credit, but it is state-only. It's not federal. Um and it would allow um if we were to go that direction, to target the income bands that I I believe the board and the committee have have already uh really underscored as as the the need uh for community, which is uh for for Carbondale, which is a higher income band than tax credit would allow. Um it is not um as lucrative a funding source, uh but it would still be a significant source. And I think in addition to that, looking at some of the other funding opportunities um that also exist, in particular, um if there are infrastructure dollars that might be available through DOLA. Uh but again, as I outlined in the memo, I know that currently those aren't available. But uh I would be hopeful that those do become available and try and advance a project um that will address those income needs, bring the housing online and have some known and viable sources that are more attuned to what Carbondale has expressed as the need. So I'm hoping that uh with some discussion that there might be some consensus or direction from the board that that would be a viable avenue that we'd like to pursue. And we could lean into uh uh making a viable and hopefully successful application in that round um in just under a year's time, while in addition, looking at some of the other sources. Um among the other things we addressed in the the last meeting was also um discuss potentially municipal bonding. I did talk with Lauren a little bit about the conversation that the board had with um the financial advisor. Um I don't know if there's been further discussion or decisions around that. Um I do know um I'm speaking with Lauren that if there was bonding to be done by the town, it would not be likely in the the magnitude necessary to support the entirety of a of a housing project. And probably there are more pressing issues um that the town will wanna bond for in addition to or instead of the housing. But I do understand that that is still um something that we had uh brought up in our last conversation. I'm happy to take further comments or um there is avenues we'd like to pursue further there. And lastly, I did have a conversation with Hillary Cooper, who leads the Middle Income Housing Authority, which is a different entity uh but also addresses um that middle income band affordability. They do have some funding uh available. It is in the form of a loan. They can issue bonds. Uh it is not necessary to use their bonds uh as a a project source, but it it could be potentially a a permanent or construction source uh for a project that would target those income bands, but it would not be a source that could be the entirety of uh a project capital stack. And it could only be one is actually supported. And we've always modeled a component of debt in any of these projects, depending on the incomes and the rents that was sized. And uh that eighty to one-twenty income band, that's probably on the order of maybe a six million dollar um permanent loan. But we're still looking at, you know, something on the order of a twenty, twenty-five million dollar project, depending on how that gets sized. So there's some opportunities there. There is appetite from Hillary and the Mihah Group to participate in projects like this. Um one of the more lucrative uh advantages they can bring to the table on the project is tax exemption um which either through their participation or town as um an owner or with the Housing Authority is is something we've already modeled in other of our projects. But it might be an avenue that we can continue to pursue um if uh we wanted to go the route we uh, which is not necessary, but it's something that's on the table. So I'll pause there. I I you know, I I've outlined a lot and touched on a lot of what was in it in the memo. But uh I think what I'd like to say, you know, just to be clear, is that I think there are some avenues forward. It will likely require some degree of revisiting on on project design, uh potentially making a smaller project or making it more efficient. Uh among the things we've talked about is potentially going modular. If we were to do so, I I think that the time is right to pivot towards a middle-income housing tax credit execution, if we wanted to do that. And we really set our eyes on going that direction. But um of course, want to hear uh what the board's, you know, um thoughts, concerns or uh further comment maybe on on that or on any of the things we've touched on thus far this evening or more broadly at Town Center. So I will pause there and I'm happy to uh entertain any questions or comments.
Thanks, Andrew. Um so to be clear, I appreciate the update. And as far as feedback, as we get into our questions and discussion, it sounds like you're asking specifically if we support moving forward with this middle-income um Housing Authority or middle-income housing tax credit to kind of increase the income ranges that would be able to live in the Sixth Street units. Is that the main point that you'd like feedback on?
Yeah, that uh in particular. Uh um and again, that is a source that is new. Um and it it will be around, so we could have uh multiple opportunities to to go forward on that. The financial side is relatively easy to model differently, but I think we could also look at architecturally, if there's some things we wanted to change in design, which of course we'd have to bring back in front of the board for review, in sizing the project to be um more fully fundable uh with some of those known sources versus a tax credit. Um uh pro forma, as we we've discussed previously, but I I I I don't necessarily need the answer this evening, but uh I think if we wanted to go that route, there will be some time in advancement application um that is necessary, the the design and the modeling. Typically, we need, you know, a couple of three, if not four months in advancement application to get all the various due diligence uh teed up. And if we're looking at, you know, similar timeline the next year, it would be by the end of this year. We would need to really be in a position to go forward with that. But I think um as far as discussion or appetite for taking that forward, there's no uh harm in discussing it now and and getting your feedback.
Okay. Well, let's discuss that. I think it's also just worth putting on the table. We're all well aware that we're about to have a transition of town manager. And it I would be reluctant to have a major pivot on this project until our new manager has an opportunity to get on board, get up to speed, meet with Andrew, fully understand it um and make some recommendations to us. But it sounds like there's not a hard deadline right now that we're trying to meet. It's just generally, does this sound like a good idea? But just open it up to questions and discussion. Questions for Andrew? Or about kind of where we are? Anything? Somebody jump in there?
No, no, go ahead. I guess I I'm just a little bit frustrated with the the amount of time that we're spending on on this project without having any idea of where we're going with funding it. Um it sounded like, and I obviously came into the middle of it when I was elected, so it sounded like we were all on board with Lytech and then that didn't work out quite the way we thought it would. I feel like it's been, has it been three years that we've been in this process?
About three years of starting with public input and visioning and all that, yeah.
So I would I would be interested in the new town manager's thoughts and sort of like where he first, he if he has ideas, experience with this. I'm just like, this is, this is like, I guess we're talking about next year now. The next is the next opportunity to apply for anything. And that just seems like we'll be in year four of an empty lot with no we have a beautiful concept with no real real idea of how we're gonna do it. So I guess that just starts us, starts the conversation.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, go on.
Um given the transition, new town manager and all the work that Andrew's do doing, I wonder if we could uh build off our financing financing workshop that we had and do one specific to housing. And we start to, there's really no one source that's gonna solve our problem. We're gonna have to create a lot of different funding sources, like capital stack. Um and I'd I'd really love to have Andrew in the room with us, with some other people, housing people, uh some of our board members, community members, kind of like we did with one thirty-three, to really kind of dive in to what this is gonna look like. I think, I mean, I've even have a hard time remembering the project and the financing because of how long it's been. And I know this is not easy, but I think it might be a great way. Um maybe in August, after Ryan's in for a little while, connect with um Andrew. But then host something that really focuses on financing and what our options are. Certificates of participation, bonds, tax credit project, whatever, because um I I think we've lost a lot of momentum and it'd be great to take advantage of a new person on board to kinda wrap around our arms around this again.
Okay, and we probably want our new finance director to be
A new finance director.
On board as well. And I think that that's, I think part of this to me is, are we in a little bit of a holding pattern right now? And I I'm curious from Andrew, like, is there anything that's pressing where if that we're gonna miss an opportunity if we say it's gonna be a couple of months before we give really clear direction? And I think even once like Brian starts August fourth, but he's not gonna be ready to jump into this at that level, probably that month. Um you know, then we're approaching year end and budget season and all that. But Andrew, is there anything on your end, timing-wise, that we wanna make sure we stay ahead of?
Uh the short answer is no. There's there's nothing um right now that is a a known deadline that we're pushing towards. Um and I I do think it it is appropriate to to wait for for Ryan to get seated as well as uh your finance director. Uh I'll note that um in in your interviewing process, Ryan actually did reach out to me to talk about Town Center and understand some of our efforts to date. Um and it's my understanding that he's got quite a bit of experience in in developing housing at a municipal level in his prior uh positions. So I think that that would be a really advantageous conversation we had, and I would welcome that. And and obviously, I'd be happy to to come to Carbondale and participate in that. But taking a step back to the prior comment about timing and posture, um you know, I've talked about this uh a handful of times before, but I think it's worth just reiterating that, you know, these projects do take time. And I think uh uh Mayor, you you had commented in one of our prior meetings that, you know, the town is on the property, I think, three, four years now. And it it's it's it seemed like a lot longer because it is sat vacant in private ownership for twenty years before that. But it is really not uncommon for projects i- in affordable housing in particular, to take a number of years to have multiple applications um submitted before we're funded and actually take something forward. I think the only um, you know, kind of significant difference here is that we've we've we took that pause after the first Lytech application wasn't funded and had a conversation about, is this really the route we wanna go? Is this who we're trying to serve? And that's been some of the work we've been doing since then, is identifying some of these other potential sources. And I think there's a there's good value in continuing to do so. And as Callan was just saying, um there is not one source that's gonna handle the entirety of our needs. But I think um as I envision, you know, any project, it's a combination of what is available for services and what are you trying to, you know, build? What are your uses? And increasing the source side and sometimes decreasing the the use side. And that can be in cost savings. And I don't think we're gonna get there cost savings wise, but maybe it's a revisioning of scope and it's parsing the project out differently. So we can be thoughtful and strategic about where we, where we can get the dollars and not, we take that forward. And I think this time between now and maybe this fall or or later fall and into the early months of winter, really getting a good grasp of what we want to chase is time well spent. But I also, I I hear that there is frustration and there's concern about how long things are taking. It's not lost on me that these projects take a long time. And I I want to be fruitful in in the time we're spending in advancing applications that we feel strongly about and that are be responsive to community needs. And I'm happy to do that work.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
I just, I mean, I love the idea of, yeah, having a follow-up meeting where we get into the different ways this could be financed. And maybe we invite Hillary Cooper to join us over Zoom or in person if she wanted to, wanted to, but just getting, having that discussion and all of us in the room, I think would be super helpful and help us provide good guidance. And then, yes, having our new finance director also in the room, along with our new town manager would be great, but that's, to me, that would be really helpful for me. I don't feel ready to really give much guidance today. And so I would love to, for us to organize that kind of follow-up meeting.
Okay, yeah, Chris.
Yeah, I'm echoing a lot of these things, but mostly what Colin was talking about, I think the capital planning and how it fits into that larger picture is really important. And just, I sort of feel like at some point, we need to put some chips on the table, kind of ahead of everybody else in a bigger way that really sort of shows. And a lot of that, I think, is about thinking about our funding and whether it's COPs or whether it's some sort of tax question. But I think if we can, I think we'd be better off if we can really try to build more of our own, figure out where, how do we build our own egg, nest egg or whatever around this? So that we have more of our own. I feel like that would create more momentum for for these other potential grants that are out there. But if we, you know, I think we, it's seems undeniable that we're gonna have to figure out how to, how to chip in funding our, our, you know, ourselves and how does that fit into all the other things we want? And yeah, how can we design a tax question or a bonding question that is appealing to the community?
Okay, yes, yes.
I also know that we've talked about partnering with Habitat and Habitat has a new CEO. And so I think it might be interesting to invite Habitat to something like that so that we have some other housing stakeholders in the room as well to start that conversation. It might be fruitful to have everybody in the same room when we're talking about financing. Maybe they have some ideas that have worked or I don't know. I think that partnering and coming up with how much money we're willing to ask for or bond or COPs is really helpful.
My only, my other question is whether at some point, this, I think, is very unorthodox, but like, is there an argument to be made at some point for trying to assemble some kind of, you know, class of potential owners in a project or renters and do sort of a pre-application phase that is a demonstration of like demand, kind of a little testing of the demand essentially, and potentially a means testing of who's out there and maybe helping us model a little bit like the financing. And I think, you know, the, it is powerful to hear from this community talking about the mobile home park. When you start putting people's faces to it too, I think that could create a huge amount of momentum as well. So, so. But I think that would be further down the road at this point. I think, I think we are in a holding pattern and and I'm, and I think that's a big reason Ryan was strong in our search was, was what we thought he might be able to bring to this project. So I would be curious to see what he has to say.
Okay. How does that sound for now, Andrew? I mean, I know that that's not really clear feedback. I, but it sounds like we want to kind of stay where we are for a little while, if there's not any deadlines looming, and then let some of our new senior staff get on board, get up to speed, give them a little bit of time, and then dive back into this. I mean, I would say at the same time, I think the, the idea of seeking out the middle income financing does seem to align well with the discussions we've had. We've been concerned about the targets for some of those units being so low income, whether that's, you know, the reality of that level of demand and stuff in Carbondale is expensive as is to live here. So that I I'd say, you know, let's continue exploring that. But it does sound like we want to get a new manager and a new finance director on board before we make any big moves.
Yeah, I think all of that sounds perfectly reasonable. And I'm happy to stay in sort of a holding pattern. I will continue to keep my eye out for, you know, new sources and these, you know, conversations in particular on CRDC, how we might be more successful in the subsequent round that will be on the table in addition to Mytech and other sources that are coming down the pipe. And just in response to Habitat, we have continued to be in conversations with them throughout our, our work on Town Center. I know they have desired to participate in the site in some way. And with their factory coming online and their modular product, that is something that we've had general conversations about. On not necessarily Sixth Street in particular, but on the site more broadly. And if there's an opportunity for them to participate, there might be some cost savings we could realize. I will, you know, add the caveat that that would require redesign, but that is not to say it couldn't be made to still look attractive and responsive to the community needs and calls we've already identified and spent so much work on. So it's a very long way of saying I'm on board with continuing the conversation, getting folks seated and coming in the room and and rolling up our sleeves. I don't want to speak on Ryan's behalf, but I could tell that he has excitement and he has an experience in taking projects that everyone wants now that take a long time and making sure they can advance. And I think he might bring a lot of value to that conversation in his, his recent experience. So as as soon as you've got a better sense of when you would like to have that convening, I'm happy to arrange your travel, make that happen and and prepare whatever would be helpful in advance.
Okay. Ramsey, I see you over there. Did you want to make any comments? Ramsey's on the architect team. Okay. All right, just listening in. Well, thanks for being here to keep track of what we're working on. Hopefully that makes sense. Any final questions or comments on that agenda item?
No, just thank you.
Thanks. All right. Thanks for sticking with us, Andrew, through a series of, you know, attempts and and so far none successful, but we'll get there eventually.
Yeah, thank you again for the opportunity. And I'll just say this is part of the game in the affordable housing development world. We're not dissuaded by it. But I think getting everyone in the room, as you discussed, and giving us all a unified vision will allow us to focus our efforts and bring something forward. So if I might also, I do just want to say it's been an absolute treasure working with Lauren. She has been, I think, such a valuable partner for our space and an advocate for the town. And I'm sad to see her go, but happy to see that she's moving on to the next stage in her life. So I don't know when I'll talk to you again, Lauren, but thank you so much for everything and I wish you well.
All right. Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And the next few items, actually, there, these are all kind of related at this point. So the next one is the Town Center Master Association Disillusion. Then we'll talk about potential contribution to the mobile home park purchases. Then we'll talk about capital priorities and potential funding sources. So there's a lot of overlap here. So let's move on with the Town Center Master Association Disillusion update.
So sorry to put that massive stack of documents in your packet. I expect that you read every word. I will say that as long as it has, this has taken, and we've talked about it a couple of times about maintaining the relationships that we have with our neighbors and assuaging some of the, I'll say anxiety about what might happen on that property that's next to their buildings, where they're concerned with not only property values, but noise and crowds and, you know, all kinds of other things. I will say that all of these documents have been and are being reviewed by the attorneys for the other three members, current members of the Town Center Association. Two of the three are ready to sign. Whenever we have final form documents, we have not gotten them signed because the other one is just doing some wordsmithing legalese. I spoke to Evan Clark this afternoon, the attorney that we've been working with from Holland and Hart. And he's not at all concerned, but there are some little details that that are being worked out with regard to language and you know, some of it's just, you know, what kind of insurance and is this a public walkway or is it something else, what have you? I fully expect that that will be wrapped up, that final entity will be wrapped up and hopefully happy within about a week and that everybody will be ready to sign final draft documents with good dates and Patrick's name instead of Jessica's name on the documents by the next board meeting, which frankly, I'm happy to sign on to on Zoom or what have you. We do have a little bit of additional work to do now that the language is all being reviewed and approved by everybody's attorneys. And part of that is, I know Jared's probably not still in the room, getting the revised plat finished so that it can be recorded, making sure the exhibits are put on the documents properly, you know, those kinds of things. But really, there's no controversy really left on any of this. It's really just wordsmithing.
Okay. Well, that's great to hear. I'm glad to hear that we're on a timeline for potentially just a few weeks from now.
So because you read every word, do any of you have any questions about what this is becoming? I mean, I think the biggest things are, you know, making sure that none of the members of the original master association are losing anything that they already have. And the biggest change is that the promenade property or tract A will be deeded to the town and then made into a public walkway officially that the town will continue to maintain. We have maintained it for years. And and then that will be protected, but it will be, it will no longer be part of a master association. It will just be public property.
Okay. Any questions?
Thanks, Lauren.
And any obstacles on that one little number seven, the pedestrian access from Fourth Street through to sort of the middle? Because that doesn't function that way, I don't think, right now.
It, well, it, it may not actually be being used that way, but that has not changed the type of use that it is. It is a public walkway. Right now, it just doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Because that that seems like a really important one and the kind of thing we'd want to look out for, and I appreciate.
And that particular owner is not this not wordsmithing anyone.
Okay.
They're ready to, they're ready to go.
Okay. Great. Well, if there's no other questions on this one, then we will come back to it in a few weeks and hopefully be ready for approval. Mark, anything else on that one? All right. Well, thank you, Lauren, for keeping that moving forward. We know it's been complicated, but important. Just one more thing related to getting Town Center ready to build.
Well, we do think that the way that we've done it, although it has been just onerously slow, has really preserved good feelings and good relationships and mutual respect between all the parties. So I'm, I'm very pleased with that piece of it.
Great. Okay, then the next item on our agenda is the Mountain Valley Mobile Home Park Letter of Intent. April is here and imagine Lauren might have some other info for us and we have a memo.
I think I'll let you go ahead and start, April, because what I have to talk to the board about, I think naturally comes after your piece of it.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. I'm April Long. I'm the Executive Director of the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition. I am also the Executive Director of the Rude Eye Water and Power Authority. And since it is Lauren's last, just wanted to take a minute to tell you all what a great job she has done working in water. I, first time I met Lauren at the goat to talk quickly about some needs that we had that summer. We had really high temperatures in the Lower Roaring Fork River and we were facing fish kills and fishing closures. And I may have stressed Lauren out by saying, we need, you know, a release of like two hundred acre feet from Rude Eye Reservoir tomorrow. Can you make it happen? And she did, and Mark. And so I very much appreciate that coordination, that quick response and that trust and faith and protection of the environment and your economies, because there were a lot of fish that were happy, but also a lot of fishing guides and vacations that were saved because of that. So thank you. And good luck. Thanks. And so switching gears back into housing and what we're here to talk about tonight are the parks. I'm not sure why I keep doing that. Am I good?
It's just too close.
Patrick will be your guide on that.
Okay.
It is hard.
Yeah, you can, you can lean back.
Lean back, okay. The mobile home parks that are for sale that you heard about during public comment tonight and are familiar with based on other conversations that we've had, those residents are working with Thistle Rock to become resident owned communities. And so Thistle is the nonprofit that's working with them to help them organize and secure the lending. The lending is through a partnership from Thistle Rock to something called Rock USA Capital. And it is, we recognize, an extremely expensive purchase. It's forty-two million dollars is the offer that's on the table for the two parks. And that is what the residents need to match in order to make a competitive offer. So Thistle or Rock Capital USA is willing to lend the money needed to make this purchase. But it, it is a very expensive purchase, which is why we are anticipating that should a mobile home park buyer buy it for that rate, they would need to increase the lot rent significantly to recover that. And so while Rock Capital USA will lend on this, there is a significant subsidy needed to ensure that we can keep those lot rent rates to something that's manageable by the the community, the residents that live there now on the incomes that they earn. And so they, local governments coordinated amongst themselves and asked West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition, asked me to help coordinate the local government response to this need. You know, there's obviously with a, we're looking at a twenty million dollar subsidy. No one entity can do that alone. And so there was a desire or a recognition from the local governments that perhaps we could all do it collectively, which is a, per response in, these two mobile home parks are, have a regional impact. They're, they're valuable to the region, not just one community. And therefore, it's makes sense. It is a proper response to think of all of our local governments coming together. So they asked me to step in and help facilitate and coordinate these conversations. And we have been able to secure commitments of funding from these local governments. So this is, this is where we're getting to this letter of intent to support. The other local governments that have put funding towards this effort are as follows. Three million from Picken County, three million from the City of Aspen, two and a half million from Eagle County, one million from Town of Snowmass Village, five hundred thousand dollars from the Town of Basalt, one hundred thousand dollars from Glenwood Springs. In addition, so that's collectively ten point one million dollars that we've been able to pull together. In addition to that, Atlantic Aviation, who is the FBO for Aspen Airport, has stepped up with a one million dollar contribution and is leading an effort to try to secure funding from other community members and community employers. Following that lead, Aspen One has committed five hundred thousand dollars to this effort. And as I said, we're in conversations all day with other community members, those that have, you know, better financial ability to support the community in this way. And so we are seeing great response from those conversations as well. So just pointing out that this is the reason for this effort is that this is some of the last remaining existing affordable housing in our region. For twenty million dollars in Picken County right now, you could build about twenty affordable housing units. You all just talked about how much it's going to cost to build affordable housing. This is a hundred and thirty-nine units that we're working to preserve. That's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars per unit is what we're looking at. That's $145,000 per unit is what we're looking at. And as all of these community members so eloquently mentioned, it's not just units. These are families. So it's 139 families that we're looking to hold here in their, in their homes that they've been in for decades. So that is why these local governments and these community members that are, and these employers are all pivoting. It's the, you know, the, what is the saying, like an ounce of provision, prevention is worth a pound of cure. So the preservation is much, much easier, much quicker, much more efficient, much more economical than the idea of replacing affordable housing. And then additionally, you can't just replace the home. You wouldn't be just replacing the homes, but trying to restore a community connection, keep people in these areas, keep the workforce in, in their, in their jobs and remaining in the, in this community as they should be. So I understand that this is a lot to ask, especially of a small community, Carbondale. And that every dollar that you contribute to an effort like this is a dollar that you're taking away or taking away from other very important projects that you are working on. But this is, you know, just a huge hit for our region and a huge opportunity for us to preserve what we have. And so what we're asking for tonight is a letter of intent to support these community members and in their offer, in their ability to make an offer for this purchase. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Okay, so any maybe clarifying questions for April? And then we'll hear from Lauren on kind of where our housing fund stands. And then I think we can deliberate and talk about the decision.
I, I just have a quick question. You know, when we had the residents from the mobile home here in Carbondale come up to us a couple of weeks ago, and it sounded like they were doing separate purchases, but now it sounds like you guys are, you guys want to do it collectively. So 42 for both. And like, what's the percentage for each, for each mobile home space or property?
Okay, so the offer on the table from the buyer is to purchase both. In order for the parks to be competitive with that offer, they need to collectively offer to, to buy both at the same time, right? And so that's the structure of how it's being un, even though each parts for home is for sale individually. And so, so the offer will be for both parks individually, but at the same time, one offer. Does that make sense? The work that we're doing, that I'm doing with the local governments is collective fundraising. And so collective contribution, there's more strength in us doing this all together. And you would, it would be probably, you might lose that benefit if you begin parsing it out for one part versus the other. But this collective fundraising will be used to, you know, equitable apportionment to the two parks. So we don't have percentages worked out or anything like that. And it's really too soon to say. But as we're still bringing in these funds, but it would be equitable apportionment to the two. With the primary goal of, of putting together an offer that's acceptable. Okay.
Any questions yet there?
Have the collective, we asked Garfield County?
Garfield County has asked me and Thistle to present at a July 8th work session.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Are there further discussions with Basalt planned or are they settled?
As far as I know, they're settled.
What?
As far as I know, that's settled. But if Basalt wanted to talk to me again, we'd be happy to.
We'll circle back one.
And if it's helpful, so with the addition of Atlantic and Aspen One, that's 11.6 million that we've raised towards this $20 million subsidy. Any amount raised is, is put towards the ability to keep those lot rents lower. We are intending to seek support from the state on this through like Prop 1, 2, 3 funds. However, the timing of seeking that grant and applying for that grant doesn't align with the timing that these residents need to put their offer on the table. So we're not shying away from that. It just doesn't, it's, the timing doesn't line up. So we want to be sure that we have the funding secured when they're ready.
April, where are we with kind of the structure of the financing? What happens to the money long term, deed restrictions? All those kind of more technical questions that we, last time we met said, we'll address those later.
So that is still, you know, really being structured by Rock Capital USA. It changes all the time, every time we're bringing in additional funding. They are anticipating that gap that we have of approximately seven and a half million. We may need an additional lender. We're having conversations with Alpine Bank being an additional lender on that with a low interest loan. And so those are all pieces of the puzzle that I don't have answers for yet. Ask your question one more time, there was a second question.
I, there are a lot of technicalities that I think we'll need to be able to discuss and give input and get answers to.
Oh, the deed restriction.
Fully make a commitment. Like, it sounds like tonight we're being asked to sign a letter of intent, but it has a clause in it that says this is not an appropriation of funds, that sort of thing. So I just want to understand that when we're committing public dollars to something, you know, stewards of that, we have a responsibility to make sure that there are agreements in place that protect that money, that make sure it goes to the intent of the contribution, all that kind of stuff. It sounds like all that's still down the road after tonight.
Yes, so they, thank you. I just forgot the second part of your question. Yes, we're still, we're beginning to work on the language that, for the deed restrictions. So any of the conditions that the communities want to put onto the funding that they're offering. Everyone is interested in ensuring that these are maintained as affordable housing. You know, that this land is maintained for affordable housing, that it's maintained for workforce housing, that's never going to be short term rentals. It's never be, going to be resold at a much higher rate. And so we're working on those conditions now. We just didn't want to get too far ahead. That's a lot of work and is going to be a lot of back and forth between me and, and you all and the residents on what that looks like. It's, was most important to get the off, accepted before we put in that much effort. But we understand there is, yes, everybody needs to appropriate their funds. They need to do that publicly. And they need to hear and have weigh in on the conditions that we are placing on that funding.
Okay. It sounds like everybody has similar concerns, though.
Everybody.
Imagine there would be probably a staff level group that gets put together where you get everybody around the table and then bring us back something to approve. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to understand what that process is going to look like.
And I'm beginning to work on that now because again, these things move quickly. And so hopefully you all would have something or at least your staff would be chewing on something in about two weeks.
Okay.
If I could, the real challenge here is they're on a timeframe. They have a date certain. Thistle has to go and make an offer to the, the current owners that is then accepted.
Yeah.
Once it's accepted, it's beginning of August is the due, is the date?
Yeah, around, I think it's August 7th is the date that they have to have an offer in by.
But I think you're moving a little sooner if possible.
If possible, and if accepted, then there will be due diligence period and closing period where we can work out more of the details.
Yeah. First things first, you don't want to get into those details if you don't even know they're accepting the offer.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, other clarifying questions for April? We'll hear from Lauren on some funding options, Chris.
I don't know if this is, if you're the right person to ask this, but I, I guess I'm, I'm still curious if there's, or curious if there's a, you know, if there's sort of modeling around what the, what percentage of those, of that ultimate rent, you know, rental fee is going into park maintenance. And I'm just curious if there is some scenario where annexation would be beneficial to the park residents in terms of lowering their water costs and potentially taking over their street maintenance as ways to potentially make a contribution in the long run.
In a different way.
In a different way or in addition to an upfront thing. I guess I would be curious if, I don't know if you can answer that or.
I don't think I can answer that for you, but I definitely can bring that question back and get the answer back to you so you can see the, the, how all of the, the rates are associated with the overall payment. I can pull that back for you.
And then, you know, the, the, another benefit to that, I think, is actually making people in those whole mobile home parks able to participate in our voting and, and elect us and stuff like that. And obviously they're effectively part of town, but they don't get to.
Yeah. I think that's a really good, good idea, good point. And I'll, I'll get that information back to you.
Okay, Lauren, do you want to share a little bit about the housing fund? You gave us a printout here.
Certainly. This is not as detailed as I would like it to be. We're halfway through the year. So what we did was took the top section of numbers, show, the one that ends, was showing the balance in the housing fund as of December 31st of 2024. And then looked at what we have earned and what we have spent to date this year. We came up with approximately, the approximate balance revenues versus expenditures right now of a million six and change. I love, don't you love how you just call thousands of dollars change? But the, then there's a little section down there that talks about what's obligated but not spent. Some of that is in our contract with Art Space for pre-development. We budgeted for mass releasing employee housing that Jared is working on right now. And, you know, rental property maintenance, our employee housing, we're trying to catch up from years and years and years of kind of maintenance that, that has been behind. And I would anticipate that we probably have another $15,000 worth of work to do on some of these units this year. I will remind the board that obviously it was again, a letter of intent. The commitment for about a million dollars for a town center, which would get us some employee housing units. If that came out of this account right now, there wouldn't be much left to participate in anything else. But I just wanted to remind you that that has come up and it will come up again. So we didn't, there was no specific source or anything else, a timing determined. But I just wanted to keep it there in the back of your mind. This fund, what's not on this page is that this fund, even after we expanded how much we're putting into it every year. When I got here, I think it was 50,000 and we changed it to 100,000. And we added short term rental tax and some other revenue sources. But this fund really grows at about a rate of $150,000 a year. So, you know, picking a number out of the air, $600,000 represents four years of growth in this fund. That doesn't mean that we can't grow it in other ways. You know, we're putting $100,000 into it now. You know, the board may decide at a future date that, you know, there's an excess in the general fund, fund balance. And you want to put a big chunk of that into the housing fund. So there's lots of different things that you can do with it. I just wanted to illustrate how it grows and, and it grows pretty slowly. So right now, approximately a million two is what's in there that's not already spoken for. We will have some extra expenses this year and we will have some extra revenue because right now, these numbers really reflect through May because of the way we get our sales taxes and everything else. So that's, that's where I've got that.
That's really helpful. I mean, I think as we talk about this, right, we have to talk about it in the context of our other housing goals. Chris was just saying, we might need to go first and go big on Town Center. You know, this is a very small pot of money with a lot of really expensive needs competing for it. So I think it's important that we have that context. And a lot of the municipalities, the most, and counties that we see on the list here have a dedicated source of revenue for housing that's significant enough to generate significant revenue in a year. And ours just isn't where we are right now, so.
If I may, just for context on those other communities, they've also, many of them have not been able to use their housing funds to, or several of them have not been able to use their housing funds to support this project. They're using their general funds and their reserves to do so.
Okay, because their housing fund has a restriction within their boundaries or something. Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. I mean, I, let's ask clarifying questions and just start to shift into, I think this is when we need to commit to a number. Right, we've got a range on there now of 500,000 to 1 million. And I think we need to specify what we're in for so that the coalition knows and everybody else knows. So where are people now with that? I think we, we had a range last time. I think I was on the low end of that range. I'm still there due to the other needs that we have and the, the limited funds. I do want to contribute, I think, looking at the list, I see Basalt as our closest counterpart in terms of the size of their budget and the proximity of a, one of the parks just outside their boundaries and all those things. And so that's, that's about where I'm comfortable. But I know that others were comfortable in a much higher number. And we may not be able to get to consensus, but we have a majority voting process for exactly that reason when we, when we can't all agree. But where are other people now and what do we want to do to move this forward?
I'll start. I'm at a million. I've been looking at the numbers and crunching them. And I know that, you know, takes up a lot of, of the housing needs. But I also feel like it's good to know our growth because honestly, I don't think the Town Center is going to be going up next year or the year after. I'm hopeful if it goes up in at least five years. That's my thought, and that's our next affordable housing project. And I just feel, you know, I also would like to put in with that big amount, look into annexation. I, I feel like that would be, you know, especially always thinking of fiscally responsible is our constituents of the town. I mean, that's a big money, that's a big amount that, that we are giving, but they are part of our town. You know, both, both units, as, as we hear, these are real people. This is our affordable housing right now. So that's where I'm coming from.
I think I'm also at a million. I think that's a good symbolic number that doesn't sound like jump change. And I think, you know, yeah, maybe the housing fund is, is, is tight here, but this is one place where I feel like in the future, yeah, we'd need to design more funding for this anyway. And I think the general fund, this is one place where I would be in favor of shifting some general fund dollars into this realm. I think the annexation thing again is something Basalt should look at and because it would allow them to potentially put those funds that they do have a tax for, towards this. And I think we should only give a million dollars. I would like to issue a public challenge to them to make it a million dollars from them. I think they in particular have some history here that, with the pan and fork, that I think obligates them to a higher standard of contribution. And I really think it'd be helpful for us to kind of push them in that direction too and think about how they can be more creative about how they can help this situation. Because I think it is in their town, even if it's not in their town, just like our mobile home park isn't in town. I'd consider it part of our town. So, yeah, I think I'm at a million too.
Okay, other thoughts?
Just a personal side note. I lived in the Aspen Basalt Mobile Home Park when I was very young. But I remember the community and I know that it's the reason why my parents were able to stay in the valley after growing up in Aspen. So I'm a million. I think it's really important to keep the communities here.
Thanks, Jess.
Ditto what everybody else has said. I appreciate Ben's concerns. We have a lot on our plate. I think we need to spend a little bit more time figuring out how we can enlarge the plate a little bit. And I think this is one of these projects where you need to step up and put the money in. And we fortunately have it. We also have other things we got to figure out, but the timing's down. It helps so many different families stay in our community. So I'm, I'm in a million. And I'd love to talk about annexation in the future. That's down the road. And if Basalt wants to join us, we welcome them.
And I also am at a million. I think as Lorna said it so eloquently, we want to be on the right side of history. The other property that we're talking about was the Bonanza Mobile Home Park right over here at Town Center. And I was reading articles from when that got sold and tore down, and it's been empty ever since. And the town trustees had an opportunity. They were, the residents, I think there were 38 residents, is it, from the article?
And the town trustees had an opportunity. They were, the residents, I think there were thirty eight residents, sorry, is from the article were begging the town trustees to do something, anything. And they were like, nope, that's not, you know, this is fine. It's going to be fine. And it's been a freaking dirt lot forever. And now we're trying to come up with thirty eight million dollars to build sixty five units there. And so this feels like the right time these communities need us to step in right now. Um and we are going to have to figure out how to get the thirty eight million dollars we need for this. And our million dollars isn't, even though we have it allocated here, we're not going to use it this year. Probably not going to use it next year. We can make it a commitment. It's still a commitment from our general fund or wherever it comes from. Um but I do, I feel pretty strongly that we um need to step up in a in a strong way. So um and it's a fantastic deal for us. We're preserving housing for a million dollars. So it feels really good.
Did you have some?
I'm the only pretty clear where the board's going, but
Yep.
I just didn't wanted to make sure that you remember that this is also where we get our employee housing from and we do not have anywhere near enough of it. So I'm not trying to change anybody's mind. But if you decide to spend this account down that far, I hope that you will also consider, you know, whether the general fund can be used or transfers or something else, um depending on the what the fund balance looks like to be able to um continue to grow that employee housing. Because I don't think we can wait five years to get a couple more units of employee housing. So.
No, I would agree with that.
Reminder that it works for both.
Yeah. Well, and I think what I appreciate about this opportunity as well is um I mean, during the recession, there were a couple homes for sale and it was brought to the board of trustees before any of us served. Um and again, our predecessors opted not to. And there were two, it was a duplex unit over on Wheel Circle that would have also given us public access to the trails through that neighborhood. And it was, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they felt like, and I get it, their budgets were tight. We were in a recession. Um but looking back, I'm like, oh, if only they had done that, that would change access from that neighborhood to the Rio Grande Trail.
Opportunities.
Which it's a missed opportunity. And so.
There are easements that exist, actually.
Yeah, but anyways, that's an aside. But I still think that was two units that would have been really fantastic employee housing as well. So um for me, for the million dollars, whether it comes out of this fund and whether we need to decide that tonight, I don't think we do. We can decide when we go to appropriate funds. So I think we can do our letter of intent um and then decide, once it becomes successful and we get Basalt, I would challenge them as well. I'll join you in that challenge to increase their amount and get Garfield County on board um. Then, and this is successful, then we can figure out where we pull the funds from.
Okay.
There's a part of me that would say, let's go for eight hundred thousand dollars and say we'll go to a million if Basalt does it. I'd love to put it in writing somehow, but uh I know, I I do think I do think um.
We can just call off, we'll call our fellow council members and say, hey, look what we did.
And it was hard for us. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, uh it sounds like we're at a point where somebody can make a motion. Um I'm not able to support a million dollars just due to all the other pressures on our budget. That's spending about eighty percent of our available funds in our affordable housing um or our housing fund. Um and we're committed to a lot of other big things. I just want to put it on the record that I'm going to vote no at a million dollars. That doesn't mean I don't support this. I see you all here. I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this and your effort and everything else. I'm comfortable at the five to six hundred thousand dollar level. I'm not comfortable at the million dollar level um with a fifteen million dollar general fund and a and a housing fund that's going to be um really depleted after this. But I respect the decision and and will, you know, support it as a as a member of the board, but um I'm going to have to vote no on that. So with that, I think we can entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one.
I would move to um submit a letter of intent. Uh in the um to support the mobile home park uh preservation effort uh in the amount of one million dollars.
I second.
There's a jump to second there, but I think Erica made the motion. I think Christina seconded it. Any further questions or comment before we take a vote? All in favor say aye.
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 And opposed, aye. Okay. Motion carries five to one.
Thank you all so much.
All right. Thank you. Um next item on the agenda is capital prioritization discussion. Not sure who's who's teed up for this one. Is anybody? Is that just me? Okay, we talked about it a little bit last time and I think we can basically breeze by it. This is another, I just think we're on, we're in a holding pattern. Thank you. Um I think we're just in a a holding pattern until Ryan gets on board and hopefully a new finance director gets on board. And we can then look at all the various things that we have on our priority list as well as things that might not be top of mind for us, but might be top of mind for staff and what that process will look like. Um I thought we were going to get dates for if we want to go to a a vote. Are we ready to discuss those at all or are we not quite there yet?
Sure.
Like what would what would the dates be? Like if we wanted to put something on the ballot as early as April of twenty twenty six? What what dates do we have to know to backtrack? I think that's the absolute earliest and I think at this point it's highly unlikely that we'll be ready at that point.
Um for for that election, it'd be the first week of January in order to get something uh uh voted on for the April election. If you wanted to move to something for a coordinated election, it would be the uh first week of September um for that.
Okay, so for a coordinated election, you mean like the November of twenty six?
Correct.
We'd have to have our ballot language ready in September.
Correct.
Okay, so our deadlines really are, January would be our first deadline, which is going to be here very soon. And then our next one would be nine months later, September. That seems like a more feasible schedule to me to think about. Maybe it's a September deadline for a November of twenty six. Um as much as I would love to see us move forward with this um less than a year from now in April of twenty six, it just doesn't seem feasible.
Because we'd have to um, because I worked on the climate action tax ballot measure um that our community opted not to support. But uh, I mean, that's final ballot language that's gone through all the legal requirements and everything in early January. And so it's like, I would say you know, it's we're spending October, November, December, if we were doing capital fund like identifying those projects, getting it super clear, what are they going to cost? What's the amount we add for increased costs by the time we get the money, you know, just figuring out the bonding on it. So it does feel as much as I've been thinking in my head, we could pull it off, but without a finance director on board to really like run it, uh that seems super daunting.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's really difficult to do that in the middle of budget as well.
Exactly. Right.
But it's great to have these dates because we keep missing because we're busy, but it just, it's really useful to know that those are our timeframes if we want to move forward. And the sooner the better um as we think about making the plate bigger so we can do more.
And I, there's some really key decisions in there, like is it a bond or is it just a recurring source of revenue? I keep thinking that the simplest answer here is a half cent sales tax that generates another million and a half or so a year. And it just goes on forever and you build projects as you go. That's a very simple way of thinking about it. We have to get, you know, all the details and that'll depend on the project list and what our role is in town center and all these other things. Okay, well, that might be about as deep as we need to go tonight. I think the important thing is for all of us and for the community and for staff to know, this is still on our radar. We're not dropping this. I think this board needs to get this done um eventually. And um it feels like rather than rushing it and saying we've got till December, we're going to say, okay, we've got till um a little later than this next year. We've got about a year. And I think when these types of questions pass, it's when there's been a a lot of community input. Everybody understands the project list. It's not just the somebody, you know, in town hall pulling out a list and saying, here it is. Um I watched Rafta and participated in that with their destination twenty forty. And there was so much discussion about what, where, if the list goes down to here, you know, there was an an ordered list so that the funding could just keep going down the list and chip and lay at projects. And whether we get to that degree or not, I don't know, but um it doesn't feel like we'd be able to get there in the next few months as we onboard new senior staff and go through a budget process.
But this seems like another great thing to, I mean, I think it's obvious we're going to have in sort of add this to that discussion around half and finance, I think.
Exactly.
And I think that's a good starting point to try to dig into this too. And maybe there's subsequent meetings that dig into it further, but.
Yeah, because even if we tried April, yeah, and we have this housing financing, just got, I mean, yeah, it just doesn't feel.
Housing is going to drive so much of this and we're just, we just don't know enough yet.
That does feel good, though, to have that discussion. It feels like it's not looming in the back of my mind. I'm like, oh, are we going to try and do this?
Yeah, I think this is now, this is now officially on our new town manager and new finance director. When they're both in place, it's on their plates as a high priority for the board within the next year and a half.
Do we actually have a finance director on coming? Not yet. Okay.
We extended an offer.
Okay.
There was a lot of back and forth and
Okay.
We're starting over.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe that's Brian's first.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the capital planning and capital prioritization?
Well, we have a pretty good list.
We do.
We have a pretty good list. It'd be great to get staff's input again. And and I think we've learned particularly around the launch pad, that there are some other things we probably have to get on the list. But we have a good start. Just there's a really big one over there and we're not quite sure of yet.
Which one's that?
Town Center.
Town Center. I mean, there's Town Center and the roundabout. I think that those are the the big ones that kind of drown out everything else. You can do a whole lot of small stuff or you can do one or two big things with the kind of revenue that we'll be talking about. And so we have to, I think we have to get really serious about how serious are we about the roundabout? Is that still something that we're going to keep pushing out or is that something we're going to say? That's top priority and we're going to get it done. And I don't, I don't know where we'll end up on that. Okay, well, let's just keep keep it on the radar. And um I think thinking as a board, if we have until September of twenty six, like that starts to sound like a good amount of time
Yeah.
to get something on the ballot for November and that that'd be final ballot. What's that? Don't get comfortable. That's right.
Let's keep.
July.
More like July and and I would say.
Yeah, I think that's.
It is really July. Yeah.
July and then there's some.
Because then there's like three weeks of.
Yeah, he needs a month probably.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, July, depending, it'd be like that last week of July to be specific.
I apologize. We're talking about November.
If we're talking about November ballot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. In twenty twenty six. Not this year.
November twenty twenty six. So midterm, you know, national elections, gubernatorial, all that stuff. Like it's one of those elections where there's a lot of going on, which focuses attention, but it also is different from our municipal cycle where we're the only thing going on and we can really focus people's attention. So for better or worse, but those are just all things to consider as we.
Get better turnout though. Also, when there's other things going on, good turnout.
Yeah, you definitely get better turnout.
But you may get turnout of people who don't, aren't informed about the town issues, which is a big, big challenge, I think.
It's going to be the last question on the ballot. They're like flipping the page over.
Yeah.
Like the poll will be.
Yeah, there you go.
Exactly.
So think about over the next year, but it sounds like we've decided we're not going to put ourselves into hyperspeed mode and try to get this on April of um twenty six. Okay, that's good direction. Um anything else on that before we move on? All right, last item um is a vote on the uh town manager contract, which you have a paper copy in front of you. It's identical to the one that I circulated um and didn't get any feedback as far as potential changes. And Brian Highland is uh set to be our new town manager and we're really looking forward to his start on August fourth. He's already signed this. Um so we can discuss it as needed, but we can also just do a motion and a vote. I think we've talked about it a lot.
I'll move to approve the town manager contract as presented.
Second.
Motion by Jess, second by Qu- uh Colin. Any questions before we vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Okay, that is all of our business for tonight. Um we can take Lauren out.